Good morning. My name is Chris Creed and I'm a longtime colleague of Eric Olson. Actually, I started out carrying Eric's great case around about 32 years ago. And so Eric is with us today and Christian with the data group is over here. And yes, familiar, I think with probably Christian and Eric more so than me, but I'm becoming more involved with the community and 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 the program that is going on here at the village. I have lots of experience with lots of other communities like Bald Head and so but I'm now getting up to speed with the initiatives that are going on with the community here and and starting a project here. So what we would like to do is get through a little bit of an agenda. And different points that we're going to touch on and more of a summary and an update on the beach management activities. And it's just, I assume, just an open discussion as we go.
That's right.
Okay, so we can do that. So we'll start out here. Do you have anything to say to get started?
Nope. Can you hear me?
Yeah, my check. You're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Karen, I guess you're in charge of the slides.
Actually.
Oh, I've got control. Okay. There we go. Okay. So the first thing to do is do a quick, this is worthless, false, we'll send your agenda here, but I added at the beginning that a quick update on where we are as of yesterday with the project that's going going right now. We'll talk about the frying pan shawls borrow site and the activities where we stand now and what really, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion about this topic. The Women Harbor Sea Management Plan, an update on some work with that. The groin field conversion, this idea of going from tubes to rock structures in the future, what some of the steps will be in evaluating that. South Beach, what's the future with the management of the entire South Beach system, including the East End now? That we're addressing this time as well. West Beach, just an update on where we are with that, some channel maintenance topics on the program there, as well as a new topic that I would like to introduce is the beach management sustainability stuff. And I'll get more into that when we get to that slide. So where we are today, this is a hot off the presses of last night, where we are, the complete western area has is finished. They finished a couple of days ago. They spent the last couple of days piping ahead between in the gap section and getting the pipe over to segment B, which is now in blue. But it's my understanding they made great progress last night and they're actively pumping this morning. So they're back underway and moving ahead very quickly. I think it's been a huge success for them so far. They've had a couple of weather delays, a small mechanical delay that sounded back for about a week. But they are back up and running and are doing well with the anticipation of a mid-March timeframe to wrap that up. They will they will slow down as they get closer to the eastern end of South Beach there as our pipeline distances get longer. Their their just productivity will drop down as this is fully anticipated by them and us. With a groin field conversion, also great progress with this. Fish tech, the company who is working on this project, the green indicates tubes that are complete. They had may not have been fully accepted yet. There are still there are still open excavations around some of these, typically probably seven to 11. And I and this was this line, I read their report from yesterday, last night and updated this. And so they're they're working on 11 today, excavating the hole. 12 today, they're excavating the hole and starting this stuff out there. So I would say it's just a couple more weeks of this group here will also be finished up and demobilized. So they they've been very efficient in this process and the mainly. Any questions on the status of of the project? So another successful project application.
No, one quick one. Quantity of sand that we have used in completing the first phase planned sand? And how much do we actually do?
Right, so they, the original bid was for a 50-50 split between about five is a total million yards about was half a million yards on the western end and half a million dollar yards on the eastern. Right before we went to construction, that that was updated with changes that we had seen in the western portion of South Beach between bid and when we went to construction, rebalanced it to about 600,000, 400,000 distribution goal. But with changes that continue to occur during the construction of the project, we ended up at about 585 on the western western section. And this is verified with the payment surveys that have been submitted to us already. And so we, in the last couple of days, actually Friday, we were working to rebound the segment the segment B section to add that additional 15,000 yards on the eastern end out there. And that is what they're worth. That's the objective we're going to do right now. And we'll continue to monitor it to make sure we get to that that million yards, no more than no less, right around that million yards. So we'll be hopefully right about right on. Anything else? Yeah, so um, and we can skip to these. That was a tenement. For me, the frying pan shoals permitting, and this is where I'm going to invite Christian to probably lead this conversation more so than any and Eric is in the background as well if he has anything to add. But for the, from an engineering and design perspective and data collection, what will from a physical standpoint, the information that would be needed to support an application request on the state and federal side, that information is available. There's no anticipated design changes from what was submitted last time at this point. So it's really going to be focused almost exclusively on the regulatory side of moving this through the process this time. If if from an engineering perspective, if we'll need, if we need to make adjustments through that process, we'll obviously participate in that and do what is needed to make sure we continue to meet the goal. For the most part, it is is a regulatory piece and I'm going to turn it over to Christian.
Yeah, so just things about. Thank you. Yeah, so as Chris mentioned, you know, we've already been through a good portion of the regulatory permitting with having submitted the permit applications to both federal agencies and state agencies. And that's what's led to the use of Jbird Shoals. The both on the federal side, National Marine Fisheries Service, and on the state side, the Division Marine Fisheries had significant comments and concerns about the use of frying pan shoals as it relates to biological resources that may may be present there. So they looked for us to explore every other possible alternative. And that's what led to going back to Jbird Shoals and the project that's currently being constructed. At this point, our intention, through direction from the village, would be to resubmit the frying pan shoals application. We anticipate to receive similar comments to perhaps get in front of those comments. There was some consideration for doing some additional biological monitoring on the shoal that would be village sponsored and coordinated through UNCW. UNCW currently has the contract with Bone to perform both physical and biological monitoring on shoals. And that information is used for baseline information to fill different data gaps, knowledge gaps. And to provide basically a characterization of the shoal, both from a biological standpoint and a physical standpoint. Currently, UNCW is engaged in sediment transport modeling. They're also doing sampling for Bentic resources, plankton and fish resources. So we've been in discussions with them potentially about piggybacking on their study to have it more focused on the dredge footprint that is that is proposed by Olson and both. So that is kind of where we stand now. We've we've talked to UNCW. They have indicated that they'd be willing and are interested in forming that additional sampling. They've talked to Bone, we've talked to Bone, that that they could use their existing mobilization, what when they move to go out to do the sampling for Bone, that they wouldn't charge the village for that mobilization, but but they could add in additional sampling as needed.
Just one quick one. The urgency. So there's, and I know you're going to get into this, but so we ended up back at Jbird Shoals. And my understanding is we ended up back at Jbird Shoals for the last time. And so in terms of a borrow site, we're against the wall on this.
Yes, okay, yes. And that's what, you know, that's what we're communicating to the agencies. We've done what was asked. We've explored every viable alternative at this point. We went back to Jbird Shoals. At this point, there is no other viable alternative. And that's part of the alternatives analysis that the agencies have to do as part of NEPA. And so I think the village has checked that box. And and now it's coordinating through those principally two agencies, one on the federal NIPS, National Marine Fisheries Service, and then on the state side, Division Marine Fisheries.
And is Jbird the last time because we're exhausting the sand before it can replenish again?
Yes, and this is more of an engineering question on the biological side, but yes, that's that's it's it's been dredged multiple times now. You start getting into where you may get into unsuitable sand. You know, or really, you know, jeopardizing the integrity of the shoal itself.
I have a quick question as well. There've been articles about how a lot of communities are trying to find sand. If we get into frying pan shoals, does that mean it's going to open it up to a lot of other communities and we could see frying pan?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and I think that's the primary concern from the agency side. Is that if they are, if they do authorize its use, that does open it up. Honestly, not only for frying pan shoals, but other shoal systems in North Carolina. So there's significant concern around that, that this would set a precedent. Yes.
You can advance ahead, Christian, to your slide. There's two more that got right there.
So and going back to the question on the timing and sense of urgency. So that was the other, you know, the agency said, well, Bone's doing a study on frying pan shoals. Let's wait until that is done. We did express that the village doesn't have time to wait at this point. So that's what's prompted perhaps the need to do a village-sponsored monitoring event. That being said, at this point, UNCW is about halfway through their sampling. It is a two-year sampling period. So their sampling would continue through the end of this year, 2025. There's a possibility for it to be extended into 2026. Their contract runs until February of 2027. So that can give gives you an idea there in terms of when we actually may season data out of that monitoring effort. It could very well be mid-2026. It's uncertain as to when that data information will be released. And then also it's is what effect does that data have really in terms of agency decisions? Really don't know that. I suspect that it won't, you know, move the needle much, honestly, in my opinion. So there's that level of uncertainty too. This graphic shows the sampling locations that Bone has. So shown in in green, so UNCW is going out here seasonally and hitting these sampling locations. And again, doing Bentic, fish trails, planktonic surveying too. And this is the proposed borrow site. So the concept was to add some additional stations, maybe more more intensive in that area and then be able to get that data much sooner. The previous comments by the agencies, we did offer a monitoring effort in the prior permitting supplemental. However, the agencies said that their concern was that it should not be contingent on a permit. As we said, we would, we would monitor, if we get the permit, we'll do the monitoring. They want the monitoring done ahead of any permitting. And they're also concerned about just having one pre-dredge monitoring event. They would like to see multiple because of the seasonality aspect and interyear variation.
How far offshore is the is the borrow site?
Chris, what's, do you know?
Right now, the women can UNCW monitoring, funding that.
That's bone. Your devotion to energy manager.
Right, okay. I'm just, when I hear anybody funding anything, I'm worried that that funding is not going to be there tomorrow.
Correct, yeah. And that's, you know, that, my understanding, it's it's all allocated, it's all in bones, you know, but yeah.
It's already in the coffers to be used, okay.
So Christian, if if it makes more sense for the village to tag on to the UNCW study, how much more, we will pay for the setup and teardown, but they're going to be doing work in that borrow site. So how much that costs the village if you add on versus how much would it cost if we had to just do our own thing out there, pay for our own study out there?
Honestly, I don't have the numbers and I can get those. I'm going to be talking with one of the G investigators for UNCW this week. And part of it is we haven't, we got to figure out exactly the sampling protocol and then they got to give us the numbers. But it would certainly save quite a bit of money.
Absolutely.
That delta, I don't know exactly.
Are you sure that's our much preferred option?
Yes. Yeah, and I think having UNCW collect that data, you know, provide maybe some, you know, analysis of it, that that would go a long way.
I'd like to add a comment. You know, one of the biggest concerns here is this connection to the Bone study with respect to schedule.
Yeah.
There's a lot of uncertainty. We've not gotten clear answers about when the Bone study is going to be wrapped up, what the product is going to be when the Bone studies ever, it may just be a statement of what what the larger ecosystem is out there. Bentic, as well as the fisheries, has nothing to do with an impact analysis over a proposed activity such as bar, you know, excavating a borrow site. And so we really are concerned about the timeline of that. It's like, okay, if we have to wait another two years to get something out of Bone before the agencies would even entertain the receipt of an application, and then we would have to do an impact analysis using that that information and additional information is collected. We don't know where that's going to go, how long that is going to take. And I think, you know, this is a convenient thing for the agencies to stand behind. That we that we have the the bone activity going on, we can't make any, we can't make any decisions until this bone study is complete. However, it can be very problematic to your timeline. And so it really, so I think some thought needs to be put into how much effort do you want to apply to separating this and and charging ahead and forcing the agencies to make some decisions without the bone information in place, whether it be additional information that is is appropriate and appropriate diligence is applied in terms of data collection on a much more accelerated schedule around your specific site to be able to maintain a timeline. And from my perspective, I think that's probably your best, that's something that really needs to be explored seriously because I'm really concerned about staying connected to the bone study.
Well, we would, we would need some numbers so we can make an informed decision.
Right, so there would have to be some scope development. If the if the intent is to maybe go down that path, scope development with these guys of what really would be required to be to be responsible and appropriate for the due diligence required to support an application. And then, you know, make a decision then about moving forward.
Why is the bone study being done? What is the purpose of it?
It is to characterize the physical and biological resources that are at school.
In any way connected with the wind farm?
So they are, they are doing it because of the different potential uses out on the shoals. And so then, filling again that that knowledge gap, the data gaps, so that there can be in the future more informed decisions on its use. So the bone study itself, you know, to Chris's point, it's not going to make any management recommendations. No management recommendations coming out of this. Now, it's going to say, here's what we found here. Here's what the sediment transporter. They will do some Delph 3D modeling, but it's not going to contemplate or evaluate the effects of dredging on the shoal. That's not what its intended purpose is.
Yes, so Bone has lots of competing interests for this resource. And I work with Bone and with other communities southeast. And they do not like to make decisions incrementally. They if they they see that the man from the wind from the Bald Head Island has made an application to frying pan shoals to use that source. Oak Island and Brunswick County beaches is a large federal feasibility study going on right now for Brunswick County. And so they're obviously those, the core is pointing to frying pan shoals, a logical option for a 50-year sand supply for that federal project should it be authorized and funded. And so Bone said, thanks, whoa, I've got, we've got all these people who are looking at this resource. What is really out there? And I think that is probably what inspired Bone, because it's kind of strange for Bone to fund that type of sponsor, that kind of study from that agency.
Right. They, the one thing they did say is that they would develop a monitoring protocols. Like if if they're not going to assess or evaluate the effects of a future dredge project, but they said if one were to occur, here are the type of things that would need to be monitored now and on what schedule, on what frequency. So they may, they may provide that information, but from an agency's determination standpoint, we're going to still have to go through the full impacts analysis after that data is available.
Hey, Christian, this is Eric.
Yes.
Yeah, interestingly enough, there were studies done in the early 1970s by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers globally identifying frying pan shoals as a future borrow site. So there is a, there's a long history of known desire to potentially tap this this area for borrowing.
Yeah.
And globally, it's like, the number they put on it was, there's available a billion cubic yards. Nonetheless, in recent times, with the with the advent of the proposal by the village, this area has come into much sharper focus with respect to now other impacts, which, as you alluded to, are potential, potential Bentic or biological impacts.
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, yeah, dating back to the 70s and late 70s, there's physical data collecting for a federally sponsored project. And they were looking at the Brunswick County beaches project that the Corps would would implement, and that sat for forever. In fact, this may have something to do with the 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 lead investigator for Bone worked for the Corps on the civil work side. So he was intimately aware and knowledgeable of the use of frying pan shoals as a potential sand source site. He worked with with the Corps and they were looking at it. So that and he moved over to Bone and this study was commissioned.
And there's precedent in the southeast with the Corps has used cannibal shoals, which is a similar, you know, geological feature for decades as a sand source for the federal project in the Bard County. And so I don't, I've asked the question several times about, is there any, any comparisons here? And they really kind of dismissed the question. But as Christian said, there's three other features like this in North Carolina that they're also trying to.
And Jake, one of the successes of the last congressional effort was that study that was sanctioned back in the 70s of Brunswick County beaches did not include Bald Head Island specifically. So we we pushed for a legislative change and so now Bald Head is included in that study.
Any other questions? Yeah, so yeah, I think there probably should be some follow-on about the direction village wants to take for this. And looking at the timeline and we could possibly, one of the things Christian and I talked about right before the workshop started was also the timeline of what what this really looks like in both paths that you have available, potentially available to you.
Yeah, just for myself, just to bring some conclusions to this. I've got Bone doing a study. It's not going to, it's not going to provide the answers that we need to do this, but basically, right now, we're being held up. We got to wait until Bone's done. We have UNCW doing studies. And we don't know that they're going to answer, or they are looking at the things, they're looking at, it's the same study. Okay.
They're actually doing.
Okay, and so that isn't the answer either. And so we, ideally, we're looking at their final product. How does it affect the final product? How much does it support the final product that we're doing in terms of creating our final product? And we need to fill the gap.
Right, so right now, we're not working on a product for them.
Yeah, but it.
I I think it's a timing issue. I mean, if if you had 10 years before the next time you need sand, it may work out okay on the bone, on the bone path. But you you don't have that because if you were to wait for the Bone study to be complete, to make application, then you got the, you got, you got two series of timelines at that point. And and Christian, what what would be the timeline if everything was normal here to get a permit for this borrow site in terms of time?
Yeah, you know, you're dealing with the federal and state rules. Once there's comments that come in, they're not held to a specific timeline. So this could extend two, three years of permitting. So it does kind of, at that point, you do start getting into at least having the findings of Bone, you know, at the latter part of that period. But but yeah, I would guess minimum two and a half years. That'd be my guess.
Okay.
So and you're saying they're not inclined to do that until we get the results of the Bone study anyways, right? Because they're deferring that.
They're not in mind right now.
Yeah.
So let's, let's play this thing out. Let's think, let's assume things get drug out, drug out, drug out. And it comes six years, we don't have sand to maintain the terminal groin and the groin field on the west end of the island. And they, and so there, and then you start having erosion. And at what point are we violating our permit for that terminal groin because we have not maintained it properly?
That's a good point. Eric, did you hear that question?
I did. It's, there is no quantitative benchmark set. It's a, it's a qualitative charge. But it, but it's, it clearly is a realistic phenomenon that could occur and is predicted to occur, particularly if if the groin field, you know, for erosion gets past the the upward limit of the groin field, then yeah, the fillet at the at the at the terminal groin will begin to dissipate. And that will basically set off alarms. One thing that's that needs to be said here is that the Bone study, the influence, the area of interest for the Bone study is in non-federal waters, which is outside that dotted line. That's, that is the three-mile limit. And so you'll notice that most of the, most of the testing is in is in the federal waters. And so what's being recommended to you is to to begin to do some testing vis a vis through the university, since they're out there doing it anyways, in proximity to your borrow site. Because you don't want to end up two years from now where, you know, the the basic conclusion is, oh, yeah, outside, in the federal waters, everything is is not so bad. That doesn't solve, that doesn't resolve the issue or the question of what happens in the, within the three-mile limit where your borrow site is located. And that's why you want to do additional testing. And the cheapest way to do that is to use UNC.
Correct.
And it could be in the, in the, on the study side, we could deal with the data and conclusions a lot quicker once we have the information than
Exactly.
than than we don't know the timeline and the agencies.
Right, yeah, you would be able to, if you had that data, you could submit it in support of your permit, irrespective of the issuance of their final, their final study. It is a, you know, it's a data source and people can make conclusions on that data.
Got it.
And Christian, what was, we've had this conversation with UNC when we tend, and when they were accepted, did you touch on the parties that you needed to talk to?
Yeah, yeah, there was a few different investigators on that Bone study. Yeah, yeah. There was a few different investigators on that Bohem study. We would be courting through two that focused on the biological side and they're both very receptive.
And when is their next, they're probably not out there this winter. So they got the spring campaign.
Yeah, the spring, I think is their next one. So we wanted to try to. If we're going to do it, that'd be the one to try to get on.
Okay, great.
So we could come back. I think one of the things that we may need to do, we suggest that we do is like, is maybe lay out a timeline for both of these paths and then a, and a high level scope of, scope of work, bulletized points and then maybe some consideration of that and then pick a path forward on how we need to get.
Perfect. Great.
Are there any other alternatives if Jaybird Shoals is exhausted than going to the frying pan sholes?
Eric, Eric, you've been doing with this a lot longer than I have. What are the other options?
There really is no other options available with respect to conventional borrow sites. And that's, that's, that's why we eventually went to frying pan shole some six or seven years ago, knowing that eventually we're going to run out of available sites. The, the town of Oak Island permitted an offshore site that they had intended to utilize this, I guess this winter. The bids on that were astronomically high, some of which was, had to do with the timing of when they went out to bid. But also in, in, in our judgment, the quality of that sand is, is, is really minimal. Or it's, 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 it's not what we would ideally like. So at this, at this juncture, there really is no other sites other than the channel itself.
Can you, can you give us an order of magnitude? Like when you say it's astronomically expensive, what Oak Island's doing? I, I don't know how you would quantify that per cubic yard like versus what we're paying or what they would be paying for that, but what you would consider to be inferior sand? What, what, what were they contemplating?
Well, I don't know exactly the price, but I do know they, they busted their estimate by, you know, five or $10 million as to what they had told the council in Oak Island, that the engineer had told the council.
We also, I saw a newspaper article about that just a couple of days ago, Eric, and said they expected it to come in around 20 million and it came in at 37 or 39. I shared that article.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they, you know, they busted the bid big time. A lot of that has to do with timing. The reason being is also they're using hopper dredge and most of the hopper dredge fleet on the east coast is doing federal channels in the winter. So it's, you know, it's, there are two issues there. One is the, the distance of the site offshore and the other phenomena that affected them is just the unavailability of the hopper dredge fleet. So it was, you know, the, the odds were stacked against them to get any kind of a realistic cost.
But, but they still secured the place to get the sand, right? So they, they could address some of that issue later, right? As far as.
They, they have a, they have a permitted borrow site. It's, it's significantly offshore. They have to use hopper dredges versus pipeline dredges.
Yeah.
Which again, in itself is additional cost, but there's an availability issue, particularly when you're trying to do this in the, in the winter to avoid turtle nesting impacts.
I have this understanding somewhere out here on the shoulder of the shoal, like Eric said, it's a hopper dredge job, it's a different type of equipment than has traditionally been used at Bald Head. And so big distances. When, when Eric talks about options, we talk about sand, we're talking about cost effective options. There could be lots of options, but which ones aren't, which ones can you afford? And so that's why we're traditionally look for, for borrow sites very close to the island. Short transport distances between the borrow site and the beach, high quality sand. This is what keeps your costs down is, is working near the island. That's why when they're, when they're coming out here on these shoulders with the 15 mile, 20 mile transits between the borrow site and the island, really expensive and not, that doesn't even, you know, touch on the point of competition with the Corps and other, other dredge work that's going on. I, I've talked that we're, we have another client in Florida that wants to bid a hopper job this year. And we've been told by the dredging industry, there's not a hopper dredge available until 2026, that they are completely booked through 26, through 25. And so.
Yeah. Yeah. All of these reasons are, are why the town of Oak Island is trying to get into the channel sand. It's, it is the least cost for them also. And so you need to be aware of the motivation associated with that.
If our, our proposed borrow site's right in the middle of the shoals, if we were to keep it close to shore, but maybe more toward a shoulder, would that help our permitting effort?
No, and it, it decreases the quality of the sand. The, the best sand is in the heart of the shoal. As you get towards the shoulders of the shoal, the sand gets much finer because it's, it's winnowed out by the, by the wave energy. And so that's why the, 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 the borrow site that we have is strategically located pretty much in the centroid of the, of the shoal.
High synergy has a wave breaking, so the coarser sand falls out in those areas. And I think the geotech that, that Oak Island found to, you know, proved that to be true on that show, they were on a shoulder of deeper water. Because for a hopper dredge, they need 30 feet of water to be able to access it because the dredge, the dredge strap. So you're on to really deeper, less energetic areas of the shoal. So the sand's going to be fine.
Yeah. And, and the village's borrow site is, is strategically located on the basis of all the core borings we did prior to initiating the first permit.
I'm assuming a hopper dredge operation would take a lot longer to execute as well. So when we're looking at our operations, some, they're all based on, well, here's a window that we have and we can make this work. And a hopper situation is, well, you're not going to get in that time period or even do it. Yeah.
And sometimes depending on the, the, the size of the project, we, there was a lot of work in northeast Florida this past year. The Corps was doing work. It was a bunch of post Ian and Nicole work that was going on because the northeast Florida beaches were severely impacted by those storms. So Wicks Marine and Great Lakes were positioned in northeast Florida working on projects from the Florida, the Florida Georgia Line all the way down to Daytona. And we saw several of those projects, they would mobilize multiple dredges to keep up with the production rates because they had the same like windows. And they got to be pretty effective. And we see the US dredge industry now trying to respond to this as borrow sites are getting further and further away. And they're slowly building newer dredges and they're bigger dredges. But they come on, they control, they, they don't want too much supply. You know, they control it. They don't want just enough, just enough equipment to keep up with what's put out there. So.
Okay, great. What you're doing, Christian, obviously we have the Ferguson group coming, Warden Smith and Ferguson. We've got to keep them up on exactly where we need to go in terms of our lobbying efforts. As you get more information with Wilmington, UNCW, let's, let's do that. Okay, great. You're on Chris again. Sorry.
So going. Okay. Well, this is, you're probably not here for Eric again. So the, the next topic is the, the sand management plan at the, at the, the channel and the Wilmington Harbor and the importance of that to the island. There, we understand a couple of things that are going on right now and just kind of set the stage of those demands on this source moving forward. As I understand it, the Wilmington district is looking to revisit the sand management plan. And I think our, our belief is that's probably being pushed by Oak Island and the federal work that's going on over there for the Brunswick County beaches. So they want to, they want to open this back up and, and, and further the investigations on what really should be the sand sharing protocol for the channel. And so it's something that the village really continues to need to stay on top of and be very concerned if there are proposed changes to the sand management plan, which is if they, if they intend to open it back up, that's probably a goal. I would, I would bet is to, is to try to, to look at that more carefully and see if there are ways to, to distribute the sand differently than traditionally. Another thing is there's an active conversation about an MOA with the, MOU, sorry, my typo there, for sand placement on South Beach with the Corps in the next channel maintenance project about moving the sand to the eastern end as an option, whoops, as an option for that is that it's, and today the Corps has never participated with the channel maintenance of moving sand quite this far and looking at opportunities in their future bid activity to work with contractors and see what the pricing and the options would be for, for use of some of the sand, the channeling the sand along the eastern area of South Beach. Obviously there are concerns about what the distribution of that sand would be in the future and where the need would be. That's our continued monitoring will help inform some of those decisions. And then we, again, kind of another, the Oak Island feasibility study, and I say town of Oak Island, it's really all of the Brunswick County beaches. But I think what they'll find in the feasibility study is cost effectiveness again, for the ones that are further west, you know, Holden Beach, O'Shaw, some of those areas that are further west. If they do find a federal project that is, is justified and ultimately it's all their responsibility. The demand on, the demand, the demand on frying pan sholes is still going to have a cost effectiveness metric to it, right? Even though it's a sand source suitable place, can, could the federal project that they identify support the use of that sand? Because they have to go through a cost benefit. And did the benefits of using that, what that project provide, to be honest, is, is the cost within a reasonable time amount. So Eric, do you have any comments on this? I know you have some, some, some things you want to share.
Yeah, I have a concern I need to leave with you before I retire. I've, I've stated this sort of subtly and I guess I'm, I'm not going to be real subtle today. What we have found historically is that placing a million cubic yards in the west end of South Beach with the terminal groin and with the groin field has been extremely satisfactory with respect to holding things together. We're about to get into a situation which monitoring will probably bear out. And that is that this time around, we did not place a million cubic yards within the groin field as, as been done either by the village or by the Corps. We've placed nominally what 60% of that more or less with the intent of sharing the sand with the east end of South Beach. What is potentially going to happen here, what, what I expect to happen, I don't, I use the term potentially loosely. We know how much sand we lose off the west end of South Beach on an annual basis. Unfortunately, the next federal project will not be for three years because the Corps bid their project late in the season this year and could not do the channel maintenance as originally planned, which would have put sand placement schedule for the west end of South Beach from the channel in 27. Now it's going to be 28. It's going to be three years into the future. What we've, what has been done historically here is every two years, a million cubic yards has been placed on the west end. We just placed 60% of that and we're going to go three years. The, the, the expectation or my personal expectation is that things are going to get very aggravated on the west end of South Beach. Could, we could see erosion that exceeds, well, could, could be all the way back to the highway. It could take out your dune. It could expose your groin field to the point that the groin field could be impacted, whereas historically it has not principally because we covered up with sand every two years. And so we never let the entirety of the, the sand tube groins be impacted. So we have a situation here that you need to consider seriously. And, and some of this has to do with the, probably the study that Chris has alluded to at the end of the slideshow, having to do with the issue of sustainability. And so the issue at hand here is whether or not you can afford to put sand, federal sand on the east end of West Beach as a routine operation. Because the lot, you, you're going to generate a huge liability on the west end of South Beach. And so I, I flagged that to you now, you, you know, you, you're, you're working up an MOA to place the sand routinely down there, but you need to seriously consider whether or not you need to do that. So it's a function of which end is more important. The west end, obviously, in addition to the, the access road, much of your infrastructure is under that access road. And so if the erosion in the near future gets back to the road, then you impact your infrastructure, which we did see historically once, one time. So this is an issue that you're going to have to consider. It's a, it's a, it's different than which, the road that you're going down right now with respect to routine placement of sand on the east end of South Beach. So the rhetorical question you need to address is which end is more important?
Eric, is, are there limits to how much can be dredged? So we were limited to a million cubic yards from the Jaybird Shoals because that's what we asked for in the first instance and also I think because of it, it being depleted. If, if we were to take a million and a half cubic yards out of some other borrow site, then we could do both ends?
Yeah, theoretically you could. You know, what we, what we know historically, just globally is the cocktail number is that if we place a million cubic yards on the west end of South Beach, the performance has been very good, including hurricane protection. Once we compromise that, that formula, there's a price to pay. And you probably will see it very quickly, particularly in this, you may see it in the next three years since there will not be channel sand for three years and we've only placed 60% of what we historically placed there. The good news is, of course, that we, we did, we, we've renovated the groin field, which is good, the sand tube groin field. But also that erosion phenomena jeopardizes the integrity of those tubes to the point that they have not historically been exposed to.
We have had a discussion about placement of rocks on the west side. If we did something about that in the next three years, would that help to protect against the erosion you're describing?
Uh, yes and no. There, there's some benefit, there's certainly benefits to it with respect to the longevity of the structures and their performance. But again, the fact of life is that the wave energy that that area experiences takes away X number of cubic yards. The original genesis or reason to consider going rock groynes was principally an economic one and, and, and an operational decision due to discomfort of replacing, replacing the sand tubes about every five or six years. It may very well be, as you'll see, as we get later on into this conversation, that that continues to be the most cost effective way of quasi stabilizing that area.
The monitoring that we were fully expecting, given that we're changing the program here, we've got pretty well documented how the million cubic yards every couple of years performs, what that looks like over, over the course of the project performance period. So we're, we're throwing a little different program here now about how, you know, a different distribution of sand, a lower volumes in each, each respective area. So the monitoring over the next year or two is going to be very important to see how, how this does respond compared to historical conditions. And is it good or bad? Is it manageable? Is it within a, a, an acceptable range of what we want to do moving forward? And I think that whatever mentioned, the sustainability thing going on long-term will be something we may incorporate in that. So it may have the ideal and we may find it is problematic. We may find it is, is manageable in a different way. We just don't know. So the monitoring is, is very important moving forward. But I think getting back also, it is, it does speak to keeping our eyes on the, on the activities of the, of the Wilmington district and the sand. That's something, that's an important activity that needs to continue.
Yeah. The monitoring will also address, address the performance of the east end fill, which is being constructed right now. Because we really haven't done this since there hasn't been suitable quantities of sand placed down on the east end since the original channel deepening project when it was filled. So the rhetorical question from a coastal engineering perspective is will this sand change the dynamic down there in a positive manner? And there is a possibility of that. But again, we're dealing with the nuances of frying pan shoals configuration. It also will address probably or, or begin to address the, the, the. the feasibility of a structure, a small structure at the end in lieu of filling the sand. But again, that, that in itself has its own baggage, particularly with respect to turtles. But it will set off a series of questions as to, to what is the best end to, what is the best way to address the hotspot in the vicinity of the, the buildings in that area?
Or discussion?
Only that, you know, I, I, I think that the intention is never going to be to compromise one end for the other end or try and prioritize it in that fashion. I think right now we have, the Ferguson Group will talk about this a little bit later, about our added, added scope contract that we're trying to put together with the Corps of Engineers so that if an opportunity arises, we don't necessarily, we might change the template if it becomes advantageous to do so, but it might be a matter of more, more sand coming out or paying for additional sand being put down at the east end beyond, you know, the west end. Just not compromise one for the other.
And that may be getting back to frying pan shoals as being your source.
Again.
It could be that you have to go there more frequently than you have traditionally. If there's not enough sand that comes out of the channel to meet the demand moving forward.
That's right. Okay, great.
Okay, we'll jump right into the groin field. And so, yeah, the conversation about converting the tubes to rock, as Eric mentioned, it was really an idea of, hey, how much longer can we continue to replace these tubes? At this time, it was difficult finding someone who made the tubes. The old, the old manufacturer was out of business. We found a different manufacturer. But just how sustainable is that in the long term is a proactive management strategy. It's, it's unclear. However, you know, the use of these rock structures, this is Kevin Bodge in our office is, is our structure guy. Eric and I worked with him briefly to try to draw a concept of what this might look like. These are called T-head groynes typically here. They are, these would all be rock structures. And so it's about where the tubes are now. And we would replace the tubes and add heads to the end zone to get to the point of, someone asked a question about, hey, would they perform better? There is some expectation that it would be more shoreline stability afforded by the, the heads being added in this area. The tubes themselves are not great at, at, at keeping sand on the beach. There's a lot of cross removal of sand that the tubes don't resist there, only resisting the long-term movement of sand. The heads provide a little more protection to that and it provides a lot of stability. And we batted the tubes in this most critical area here to protect, you know, the road and that infrastructure associated with that. And but then there'll be synergistic benefits further to the east to kind of the impoundment effect as the tamps, sand is trying to make it to the inlet with the wave climate here. They would be engineered structures. And I use the word engineered here because the, the maintenance requirement would drop significantly. You know, we're going to engineer these things. They're going to be meant to be stable. And just like the terminal groin, they're not going to go anywhere. They're going to be there when we come back five years from now. And they would be eligible for FEMA assistance because it's a, it's a public investment into these structures. Should they get damaged during a major event, they would be, the repair of those would be eligible for FEMA, FEMA assistance. And so we have, we've had some experience with, with that, with the rock structures. They are considered a permanent, permanent in, in parentheses there because of, I mean, enclosed because it's, there will potentially be some maintenance should we have a major event. But the, while they're designed, the boulders and the armor rock are designed to be stable under most typical design conditions, storm conditions, 25, 15 year event, whatever we come up with. The biggest issue is, is cost. This would be a significant investment to make this and much more than at a tube replacement event. Orders of a couple of million dollars versus, you know, it would be a significant investment. They could also, should it be permitted, it could be also phased over time. We could, we could target areas of those critical need to begin with, supplement some of that with tube replacement as we continue to go along. Obviously, it's not a one and done deal that we have to do it all at the same time. But the goal would be the initial investment of that would be offset, offset in the long term by reducing tube replacement cost as well as some potential savings with sand replacement. Ideally, that would be a goal and we would be hopeful that would occur. But continued monitoring would help guide some of that. There wouldn't be predictive analysis that would go into it at the beginning to try to see if there would be, could we quantify some of those benefits of the funds? The biggest issue with these, at this point in time, we don't, we, we now have a law, right? That allows us to talk about this. But we, we have some rulemaking that's going to have to occur in pretty short order. It should, should we be in a position where we want to be in a position that we start implementing some phase of this at the time next tube replacement project comes online? Which could air to just in five or six years. So Christian, do you want to speak to the?
Yeah, I'll make some things. Yeah, in terms of the permitting effort, as Chris mentioned, you have the session law. But there's no, there hasn't been any rulemaking to this point. So it has to get codified in the administrative code for DCM to say, how are we going to permit this? And once that is, is established, you can submit a permit application. But we also have the federal side that we cannot forget about. So this, there is, there is going to be new rules on the state side that will allow for it. You still have to get the permitting on the federal side, which will be a pretty big lift. Not unlike the terminal groin, the, you know, there's session law passed for the terminal groin. We still did a full EIS for the terminal groin. I'm not suggesting that that's the case for these, but there could still be a significant lift in terms of permitting on the federal side. So just to be aware of that.
Chris, just our, our replacement of the tubes this session. Do you know what the budget was for that? How much did we spend on doing that or plan on spending?
Eric, are you? No, I can't, I don't remember the, the total all land cost of the tubes this time. Do, do you have that in your notes, Eric?
I want to stay, I want to stay between the tubes themselves, which the village acquires and the installation, I think it's two, two and a half million.
Right. And this cost range of 10 to 15 million is to replace all those?
That would be.
And that's today's price.
Yeah, well, that's today's price for the tubes too. So theoretically, you know, it would be a, a return in, you know, five years or whatever. Is that? Or five, five replacements or, and that would be, it would take 30 years to replace it, basically. Okay, thanks.
With, with, if all costs being equal, and that would not include, should there be benefits to reduce sand requirements here as well?
Got it, got it.
That, that would all need to be looked at.
But it's right now, just pie in the sky, it's like a 30 year.
Return.
Return, right, okay.
Yeah, and we'll talk about this more, this idea of sustainability as well when we get to the end of the conversation. Any other questions about, this is all high level concepts right now and wanted to throw in. And the reason we draw drew this too was to try to get that cost number to go. We were talking at the house like, what, what would it cost to be, what would the order night would take? Yeah, so just some ideas. This is, this is what's going on. This was last week. This is what we're dealing with every, every few years on the tubes and what they do. This is a, this is an application along McKee that we did. This is a client of ours from the west coast of Florida. Much lower settlement transport rates, but same idea on the northern end of this island where they could not maintain the beaches along this area of the island. It was starting to impact the estuary here as well as some of their more important infrastructure coming north end. They had tried some concrete groynes about 10 years ago that were not very successful. So we came in and added these T-head type structures here. And they, they have performed exceptionally well, particularly with some of the more recent hurricane activity that we've seen on the west coast of Florida. The direct hit this year, I forget, I lose, I lose name of the storms. I don't know which one it was. It was one half, but it, it went right across Longback Key and, and, and all the sand was still on the structure when, when we came back, which was, which was very surprising and, and, and speaks well to how well these structures do perform. And the similar, the rocks were all there. There were none, there were rocks moved at the time. So that maintenance of the structures.
How are those different than the, the concrete groynes that failed?
Yeah, the concrete groynes, they were just as big, they were, they were like concrete structures, like precast structures. And they were, they were almost like a, a stick type groin, like the tubes intended to be adjustable. Turned out they weren't very adjustable and they didn't have that, that T-head benefit at the ends of holding the sand. And they, they weren't well positioned in our opinion as well. But that, actually, that's, that's them up there. We just worked around them with this extension. And maybe notice these two guys here, that's a breakboard and that's a breakboard. So we added dot one, dot one, and these three here around what they had originally done. The idea of a phased approach also was applied here. We didn't, we just kind of integrated what they already had to make it work. They were expensive. It was precast marine construction from margins. We like working with the rip, the rip rap with our structures because they're, they are adjustable longer term. You can add to them, you can move them around. And, and they, they're very good at dissipating wave energy around. So we can move on to South Beach, the idea of what's, what's really going on there. I'm pretty new to you. Given that I muted this, I spent a little time exploring around. And so I spent some time on Google Earth to really say, what, what really has happened here? I know you guys are more familiar with this than me. But the, it really is kind of shocking what has happened. But speaking, going back to what Eric mentioned earlier about the relationship between the dynamics of the frying pan shoals here and the shoreline is, is a clear relationship between channels, changes in the shoal itself and what's happening on shoreline. Obviously, long-term performance with the project going in place is going to be really important to accommodate future decision making on what, what we want to continue to do there, including the need for a structure or structures. Really concerned about, you know, what the structure, how, how, how feasible that really is, given the turtle nesting activity. Think it's some of the highest density nesting in the state. Isn't it, Christian? I think there's some of the maps I've seen. So there will be lots of focus on what, up into impact that might have to nesting activities there. I'm just, I wondered just myself, is it because of the shape of the shoreline and the confluence of all this, why the turtles find the spot so attractive that it is inconvenient for proactive beach management at this site? Obviously, sand placement is the least impacted thing we can do here. But we are really concerned at looking at what is the long-term cost of that and how well will it perform? Perform. Now, there are areas where beach management works and there are areas where it doesn't. And typically where it doesn't is where you have a even rate so high, the original stress so high, the sand placement along cannot address. So that's, that's typically where you start talking about other types of activities of strategic retreats. When there is an opportunity to do so, how, how would that look? And I think I've talked to Chris some about this. I guess there, there are some conversations about that here. Continue to keep as part of the conversation with this. But I think the most importantly right now from my perspective is what's going to happen with this project we're building is, is the biggest thing.
Chris, just to add to that, the Shoals Club has applied for a permit to expand its sand bags. And that's expected to be decided this month. So they, they will be put, I, I anticipate they will be putting up additional sandbags.
They will be. That's our understanding. We, we had some coordination with them, hoping that they would push that off to the fall to kind of stay out of our contractor's way. But that, my understanding is they're going to go ahead and do it. So we've been working.
They thought they would be able to get it done before the sand got there. And I just sent them an email and said, not going to happen.
Yeah, we, we were worried about the contract. We've already let Marinix know that this might be happening. It would be great if they weren't there when Marinix is there, let Marinix do their job. And you think, we know they'll be good until the fall. And if they could do that work back then. So I, I kind of fell out of the conversation after some, and so I'm not sure how that decision to go ahead and do it now. But if there is any flexibility, it may be something worth having more conversation.
The hope was that if the sandbags were in place and then the sand was placed on top or around, that it would really work well. But if it can't happen, if the timing's wrong, nothing you can do.
Is it the same where the sandbags currently are?
Yes, except also extending out to the lot that the Shoals Club bought.
Getting higher.
Just one less.
And getting higher as well.
They're going to be higher and deeper.
Okay.
Wider.
Yeah, it's only like a couple of weeks. I don't think it's a long project, is it?
I don't think it is. It certainly wasn't a long project to do the original job.
Yeah, Marinix is rolling, so they're, they're ready to get out of here. I don't think they're slowing down. So we, we will sit on top of that and make sure that they, they work together typically with these guys. They're, what they could possibly do is just leave this massive hole there and build big burns around them with all the sand. And then after the fact, these have to have, they have to push the sand into the hole. We're going to have to stay on top of that, you know, timing. We've done that before with dredging companies like around crosswalk construction, do you know, wall construction and things where there might not be, they may not be ready to receive the sand and they'll stockpile it adjacent to the activity. They're not going to stick around and push it in the hole, but it'll be available to, to the Shoals Club if they want. So we'll need to, we'll need to talk about that. Just some other things Chris asked to, to touch on. Oh, so on the west beach, clearly there's lots of activity from the point, lots of sand moving around the end of the island with the beach turns for project coming. This part, this will be expected to continue. It's not any sand waves, as I call them, continue to migrate northward. Toward, toward the, toward the marine entrance ultimately, ultimately ended up down here. So we will continue to, to monitor this. Should there be a need, you know, there's opportunities for sand along these areas. We've never, we've never done a sand scraping event on, on, to my knowledge. We've done these in other areas in the southeast, moving sand laterally, laterally along the shoreline. But it may be best to look at options and back passing, which you guys do have familiar with, familiarity with, even back passing out of the channel maintenance area itself, moving in a, in a direction. And monitoring can help facilitate those decision-making activities as well. That, that's what's so great about monitoring and have such a well-established program. Another community I worked with that I've got most of my career with, Towne Hilton Head Island. And they have a monitoring program just like the village. And it is such a great thing to have in terms of making these, these decisions on how you best manage this resource. Very familiar with, with the Towne Hilton Head's program. And I see lots of similarities with the history of the monitoring program here and how it's used. So that's the, that's great. And it does help also with that FEMA, those FEMA activities as well. When you get, have any information in hand and not having conversations with FEMA about trying to wave your hands and what data, what was it like before the storm came? And that sometimes it's difficult, these conversations are difficult. Chris, do you have anything to add to this?
I, I had a quick question for you, Chris. Do we monitor all the way down to the entry to the marsh?
One of my slides that, and I'm going to very close your eyes because I'm going to show you a slide and we'll get back. It was one I meant to delete. So it goes at least to here. How far into the, does it end at Road Dot Row, Eric, or does it go all the way onto the spit?
It barely goes onto the spit. The issue being that much of that spit has accumulated in the last few years. It keeps getting longer and longer. Now, it is, it is indirectly monitored obviously by controlled aerial photography also.
Yeah, my, my concern, and I'm, I'm way not an expert on this. I'm, I'm concerned about the health of the marsh and the tidal action that feeds the marsh and clean. You know, I'm making stuff up here. But, and how much that's getting closed up. And so whether that's something we should be looking at as well, that's just a question that you guys.
So not just the shoreline, but there's, there's, obviously there's some changes occurring down here as well, it appears to be. And it could be pressure from this bit pushing into, to that area.
So it's just a concern, I'm sure, you know, the conservancy.
Well, we do have aerial photography. I mean, a lot of this stuff we can, we can track with aerial photography. We don't have a lot of quantitative information.
Got it.
Easy enough to add, just to add some survey lines and quick analysis. It's, it's more about getting a baseline established. Aerial photography is cheap and it's very, very, and it goes along the way with the trends. And so that could be the first step is to just maybe pay more attention to this.
We can have conversations about this later because I, I just curious whether it's an issue. Okay, great.
Yeah, just some, some activities. If you do go to the monitoring reports that we buy every year, they're graphics up like this. The west beach area is in here. And this is volume change. So this graph here, so everything above this line is positive. And this shows the big lobe of sand here that has made it around from the south beach. But we're seeing a lot of stability here. But to your point, I mean, Eric, this is, we, we don't really extend this analysis beyond that right now, but we can. That's, that's the problem. And we're always available to, to talk through any of this with these reports we deliver. Available to explain it and have conversations about what, what we're presenting. Little bit complicated graph, given the different shapes of the shorelines. You can see, you have to follow the areas on where, what means what. And just the channel maintenance, you know, obviously continue, continue as is, right? Continue to, Chris wanted to speak to this, but there are some activities that we may want to look at as, if they continue to ever cause a, if they ultimately do cause a problem with what is going on with the, the continuing impoundment of the structure here. The bypassing rate, is the rate of dredging changing over time? Are we, is it becoming more problematic and requiring more frequent dredging? Just something that we can, we can integrate into, into our annual monitoring and also just the conversation that we have. Does it have to be on the schedule of the monitoring activity? But back passing activities are mentioned earlier. We could take sand in places that are here and also looking at shore here. Most elements like this, particularly strong unidirectional transport, meaning sand goes from left to right. Not much going right to left. And so it's, it's something that does put a lot of pressure coming, coming from the south side of the channel. Yeah, so this is, this is when I, having stepped in and wondering what's going on on Bald Head Island over the last, you know, six months to a year I've been working with Eric, started asking myself some questions, given my, my experience with other communities like the Village of Bald Head. And I've done this with the Towne of Hilton Head Island, probably started about 15 years ago. It's like, what is the sustainability of our program? What, because these programs would depend on lots of things. And most importantly, it depends on a sand source. And what are the sand sources that are available to you? How sustainable are those? We go through great lengths at Hilton Head of protecting these sand sources. These cost-effective sand sources that are near the island. Because we know that once we use those up and they're gone, the price of doing business skyries based upon the distance. And it just becomes more difficult to get access to the equipment. And so what does that look like over the long term? We've got sea level rise. Yes, all of the coastal communities like the villages are faced with, what are the effects of sea level rise? And that, we flooding, most people talk about flooding with sea level rise. We look at it also in terms, what does it do to sediment transport rates along your shoreline? As you get deeper water, larger waves can make it to the shoreline and sediment transport rates can go up, which increases your long-term demand for sand. And then there's a balance. If our, if our demand goes up, where does the sand come from? What are your future sources? What are we listing? Well, right now, J. Bruce Shoals is out of the question. We believe, think that's over. So we've got the harbor, we've got the channel maintenance program, and we've got frying pan shoals and not many other options right in our mind. So we really have two. What does this really look like and what does it cost to use these into the future? There's a national exponential increase in the cost of dredging. It, whether it has, it makes any economic sense or not, based on their actual costs. I think it's more of a supply and demand thing, but it's, it's shocking what we're seeing now. Some of these, you've been very fortunate that you have a project so far that dredge, smaller dredging companies like Marinex can build. Some of these communities where Marinex and Norfolk can't, are, it's so complicated or the sand sources are so far away. We have Weeks Marine Manson in Great Lakes. And they charge a lot, they, for, for their work. They're very expensive. We're seeing mobilization costs in some projects right now, 10 to 15 million dollars just to get the equipment on site before we start pumping sand. Your, your total project's 18 million dollars. And so we've been very fortunate. And that's really with frying pan shoals. We would like to keep those smaller dredging companies accessible. Give them projects they can build that will, that continue to help keep the cost down. Because they have more competition in the dredging, the dredging industry. And how would you be impacted by these competing interests moving forward? You've got Brunswick County beaches we've talked about. We've got the idea of New Hanover County. Might start looking at this as a show, as a source on the other side of the frying pan shoals. Is that a cost-effective source for them? And also what is offshore wind going to do to your, to your sand source? We see this in other communities, Flagler County, for example, with data centers. We've got a bunch of data centers being built in Flagler County right now, which is just, just north of Daytona, Jackson, between Jackson and Daytona. And there's like five data center cables coming, with a couple coming from South America and some coming from Europe. And they're going right across the sand sources. And so Bohm is now having to deal with this conflict of all these, these uses. You know, all the infrastructure that's going to be put on the bottom from the offshore wind. We need to really make sure they're not going to be put, it's not going to be put in areas where you potentially have a sand source. Because once it's on the ground, like in Louisiana, what they deal with a lot is the, is the pipelines. It's all the pipelines that happen. They're finding sand, but there's pipelines all over. And so accessing that is very difficult. How frequent will sand placement be needed in the future? Will, will conversion of the structure field reduce that? Or would there be an offset with sea level rise? Where, where will that go in the future? By adding, this is part of the extent of the conversation we've been having of adding this, not splitting the baby, but adding south beach to the management program. What does that really cost long-term? How does that increase your long-term management cost? And so really, one of the ways to do that is a sustainability study. And this is, this is, can be a living document and a living study that we've worked on. We call them beach management studies sometimes. Where we can put up, we basically put all the pieces of your program together and we start looking at the cost ranges of feasibility of, of these different pieces, the cost of these ranges of cost over time, and do a simple engineering economic analysis of where are these capital hits through time? Kind of like spreading the cost of the groin field out over time. When is the return on investment of some of these pieces? And really, what does it look like? What I have found beneficial to decision-making groups like you is what does this really look like on an average annual basis? And how much money do we need to generate? And where will those funds come from? And what are the other funding sources to do that? And where, where is this community in 30 years with this type of thing? And so you start really looking at the long-term program as a whole with everything else you guys have going on, not, not just the beaches. So it's something that, that can be considered by, by the village, something you may want to talk about over the next, you know, whatever timeframe might be. But it's definitely, I think, when I started working with Eric on this, I started having a lot of my own questions. And I've kind of framed out some of these questions, but out there and start a conversation about that. So with that, unless Christian or Eric have anything else to add, that's the scope of our presentation today.
That's correct. I'd, I'd like to follow up with that. The sustainability study, because this council is not going to be council in 30 years, I don't, I hope. You know, there, there's a continuity necessary for the beach that we're not going to have as individuals. So, thanks.
I, I see that. And I'll close out too with my career. I've been doing this, I've been with Eric for 32 years now. And so I'm getting to my point in the career where I'm seeing changes in councils. I'm seeing changes in staff. And there are many meetings now. I walk into the room and I'm the only person that knows it.
Yeah.
Because the people I've worked with for 30 years aren't there anymore.
Sure.
And so it, it does help having a document that future staff and future councils and, and decision makers can go back to. They may not like it and they can always change it. But it's definitely a starting point of what the expectations can be.
And how much would that cost, generally speaking, if we were to?
It could be anything. I mean, you could, you could have to, how deep, how deep do you want to dig? You know, and you can do a high-level analysis and you can get more and more.
But if, to the extent we want to work on our budgeting for, you know, going forward, if we could get an idea of reasonable, you know, we don't want to have something that's useless. We want a decent product. But I don't think we need all the whistles and bells to start.
Right. And some of the things you could, you could take guesses. That would be like the performance long-term. If you want to get into some big protective modeling study, well, you may not need to do that. You can just start guessing that ranges and it can, you could say, and then if you find out later on, it's like, hey, we want to know more about this piece of it, then you can say, well, let's budget for that and add two. So there's different ways. And we can definitely work up some outline scopes and, and ranges of budgets for things.
Okay, great.
The budget season right now.
Yeah, okay. Thanks so much.